Good evening and welcome to the October 21st, 2025 meeting of the City of Vista Planning Commission. I call this meeting to order. Would you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Darcy?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Torres, may I have the roll call, please?
Chair DeJesus.
Here.
Vice Chair Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Grimm.
Here.
Commissioner Joliffe.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Hastings, absent. Student Commissioner Nguyen. And Student Commissioner Parrish, absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've been provided with the minutes from our meeting of June 17th. If there are no changes, can we hear a motion to approve? Commissioner Grimm.
I'll move approval.
Thank you. Commissioner Martin.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from our June 17th meeting. Please cast your vote and lock it in. And that motion passes unanimously. Patsy, are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
Good evening. No changes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is oral communications. This is the time the commission sets aside for members of the public to address the commission on items that are not on our agenda. If there are no speaker slips, there are none. I do not have any speaker slips, but if you want to address the commission tonight for a reason that's not on the agenda, please fill out the speaker slips. They're outside on the table and you can hand them to Mr. Torres. Are there any ex parte disclosures communications from the commissioners? I'm going to ask this before the public hearing starts. So in that case, I don't have any. We'll move to, onto our first public hearing item, which is item PH1-P24- whoops, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the, yeah, that's, that's the, sorry, that was the last commission. I'm not looking at the proper agenda. My problem, my fault. It's item P23-0070 Vista Old Taylor. And does the staff have a presentation for us?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the Planning Commission, the project before you tonight is a public hearing for the Vista Old Taylor project. That site is located at 938 Taylor Street and 1022 Old Taylor Street. The request is for a site development plan and a tentative subdivision map. The application number is P23-0070. The subject site contains four parcels totaling 6.92 acres net. The property is located north of Old Taylor Street and Taylor Street west of East Vista Way. The site currently maintains two single-family residences, agricultural operations, vacant land, as well as a man-made pond. The general plan land use designation for the site is medium-low density residential, which allows for a maximum density of five dwellings per acre. The zoning of the site is E1 estate residential with a minimum lot size of one-half acre per lot. The project before you tonight again is the Vista Old Taylor. It includes a request for a site development plan and a vested, vesting tentative subdivision map. The project proposes development of 28 single-family homes on 6.92 acres, which equates to 4.05 dwellings per acre. The project also includes open space as well as other site improvements, including drainage improvements, wet and dry utilities, and other infrastructure. Recreation amenities within the development include passive open space, man-made pond, walking trail, as well as natural vegetation. This project will utilize Senate Bill SB 330 in order to facilitate the development of the site. A little background on SB 330, the approved Senate bill requires that cities shall not require a rezoning if a project is consistent with the objective general plan standards. The city must waive standards if they prevent development from achieving the allowable maximum density within the general plan. The project is exempt from any future changes in the development code as of their submittal date, and the city is prohibited from denying a project that complies with all the objective standards or conditions such project in a manner to reduce their density unless there's an adverse impact upon the public health and safety or violates a specific state or federal law. And there's no feasible method to satisfy mitigating or avoiding the adverse impact or other, other than disapproving the project and imposition of a condition that reduces its density. As part of, as part of the development's SB 330 request, they are requesting a number of waivers from our development standards. Those include front yard setbacks, side yard setback, rear yard setback, building side area requirements, minimum private street width, lot area, lot depth, and lot width. The submitted site plan illustrates a tentative subdivision to create 28 single-family residential lots with access provided by a 24-foot wide private street. The site plan also illustrates separate lots for a detention basin, natural open space, as well as a man-made pond and green space. Within the site, there's a total of four parking spaces provided for each home, which totals to 112 parking spaces provided. In addition to those improvements, the site also will include a pedestrian walking trail The proposed project includes two floor plan types. There'll be 12 three-bedroom homes, Plan One, which has a total square footage of 1,778, as well as 16 four-bedroom homes with a total square footage of 1,919 square feet. And again, each home will maintain a two-car garage. In regards to architecture, there'll be three variations of architecture, including farmhouse, cottage, as well as a prairie ranch product. The exteriors of homes will include asphalt shingle roofing, faux shutters, unselected windows, a variety of color schemes, and enhanced siding in selected locations. Once constructed, the homes will have a maximum height of 28 feet. The submitted plan also illustrates two separate open space areas. The open space area Lot C would be 1.2 acres, and it would include a natural vegetation area, passive green space, a pedestrian trail, as well as a stormwater basin. The second open space area to the rear of the site is 1.58 acres and maintains a man-made pond, vegetation, and a pedestrian trail. In regards to considerations, this project does comply with the City of Vista General Plan 2030. It provides quality-designed housing, a variety of housing type, and increase in overall housing supply for the city. In conformance with the zoning ordinance, this project has been designed to comply with the R1 Zone Standards in regards to height and parking, and this is consistent with SB 330 requirements, and the applicant has provided evidence that the waivers can be justified. A mitigated negative declaration has been prepared for this project and was circulated from July 9th to August 28th. The mitigation measures within the document identify measures related to cultural resources, tribal cultural resources, and geology and soils. The city did receive seven comment letters, and they're included in your packet tonight. And the conclusion of the document indicates there's no substantive issues raised in the document itself. With that, staff is recommending the Planning Commission adopt two resolutions, one approving the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigated monitoring and reporting program for the 28 single-family home subdivision on 6.92 acres, as well as a resolution approving a site development plan and a vesting tentative subdivision map for the 28 single-family home subdivision on 6.92 acres located at 938 Taylor Street and 1022 Old Taylor Street. That concludes staff's presentation, and the developer applicant of the project also has a presentation that he wants to provide to the Planning Commission as well.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ressler. For the purposes of due diligence, I need to make an announcement that I didn't make prior to the public hearing, and I don't want to take away from that great presentation, but just if I may, on our, the protocol to review is, staff makes a presentation, as Mr. Ressler just did, followed by the applicant's presentation. Then the commissioners will have a chance to ask questions of staff and the applicant. And then I will open the public hearing for comments from the public. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the commission. Please make sure to fill out a speaker slip if you'd like to do so. And then I will close the public hearing, and we will have a commission discussion and a motion will be made concerning the project. Thank you for allowing me to do that, and we appreciate the presentation if the, if the applicant would like to make their presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Brent Little, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the True Life Companies. Before I start my presentation, I first want to thank Michael and Patsy and some of the folks in Public Works and the City Attorney's Office and a number of city staff that have worked on this project for over three years. We sincerely appreciate their collaboration and the time and effort that they've all spent on it. And in the essence of time, where I have a slide that is a duplication, I'll skip over that. So I'll call your attention to the image on the right-hand side of this slide. It shows where our property is located with the red star. Above us is the rural residential that's in the county. Diagonally and kind of kitty corner at the bottom is medium-density residential. And then directly below us and across the street is high-density residential. To our east is medium-high-density residential. And then along East Vista, there's a variety of uses. So what we did when we started our planning for the property is we looked at this variety of land uses around, and we said, how do we come up with a transition of density from the higher density below us to the rural residential in the county? And now I'll point out the middle image, the general plan. And as Michael pointed out, the general plan designation for the property is medium-low density, which is five units to the acre, which is the ideal transition density. That gets us a single-family detached house that is, that mirrors the rural residential, but it's a little bit more dense than the rural residential, but less dense than all the attached product below. On the left-hand side is the zoning, and again, as he pointed out, that's state residential, which is two units to the acre. So there's this inconsistency between the general plan and the zoning. And so in collaborating with staff, that's how we ended up at the R1. It wasn't like we went out and said, let's come up with this long list of waivers. There just wasn't a general plan designation that dovetailed in with the MLD and the site plan and the transition density that we're trying to accomplish. So that's how this was engineered. Aside from the actual uses out on the ground and the densities, this is good planning. The property is surrounded by residential development. It's near the East Vista Commercial Corridor. There's schools, parks, public buildings, offices nearby. This is good planning. It's a good infill development. When we start out planning a project, the first thing we do is we look at the community's general plan for guidance and policy direction. And so when we did that, there's a number of the policy statements that really jumped out at us, not just under the land use, such as redeveloping underutilized properties, but also in the housing element, removal of constraints for new housing. But the one here that really, I think, speaks to us is the community involvement. So one of the things we did along our multi-year process is we went out and held a public meeting and met with residents and got their feedback on the project. So this is an SB 330 project, and I think everybody in California knows that we're in a housing crisis, but I'm not here to lecture about SB 330 or housing law. We're in the community. We follow the Planning Commission. We heard your last hearing that you had. We know that you know what SB 330 is and all the new housing laws. But we did include this for members of the public that may be listening at home or here tonight that aren't as familiar with it. And really, the takeaway for us is SB 330's goal is to encourage housing and find policy statements that have already been enacted to help further housing construction. But what we are going to tell you is the project benefits. We looked at this project and said, what can we do that's a little bit more? What other benefits can we do that are above and beyond what might be disallowed by SB 330? And so we have a number of things here. Probably the one that sticks out most obvious is providing sewer connections to other residents that are not on the city's sewer system and on septic. And I think this provides not only them a benefit, but it's also a good policy directed by the county to help improve water quality. Oh, one other thing on the benefits, and you see it here, is we're preserving the pond and the drainage that goes from the pond. And it's something that at our community hearing, we did hear from the neighbors, and candidly, we got conflicting direction from them. Some didn't want to see the pond or the drainage at all, and others wanted us to enhance it. And I think, as you'll see from some of the other images, we felt as though that enhancing it was the better look and feel and better for the community, and I hope you'll see that as well in the other slides. But in the site design, just one quick thing to point out is because of the unique topography and geometrics of the site, you end up with a property that is not very dense. You have single-loaded streets, so the houses at the top there will only have houses on one side of the streets, and the elevation climbs up towards the right-hand side of the property, so there will be view opportunities, and it gives a more open feel to the community. We wanted to just show you our plant palette, and honestly, it comes right from the city's design guidelines, but we thought it was important to share that it's a Southern Californian native, low-water consumption, drought-tolerant plant palette. But we also picked plants that had colors and textures, different textures, and different And here's one of the images that shows the pond in the foreground and the homes that will have some good views as they climb up the hill there. And you'll see that there's a sidewalk on one side of the street, on the right-hand side going, going up the hill. What you can't see from this is at the foot of the retaining wall down by the pond, there's a DG trail that loops from the back of the community down to the pond, so neighbors will have the opportunity to access that. And this street view of the project merely is to show that there's a variety of architectural styles and elevations and colors that we're using as part of the design. And as Michael said, there's also another design that we have that is an enhancement to the side elevations, and I'm sure you guys are familiar with that because it's part of your objective design standards. And here's another image of it, and what I really wanted to point out with this is that we do have a number of different exterior finishes. We have siding up at the top to kind of break that plane up, and then we have different projections, even on the ones that are not the side enhanced units. And that's forward and back so that it breaks up the architecture along the front. And this image here is looking from Taylor up towards the project. And again, those houses on the left-hand side, there's only, you know, the one on, they're the only ones on that side of the street, and they're looking out towards the open space as they go up the hill. And finally, I just wanted to point out that this is a traditional neighborhood design. It's not a cluster. We're not using state density bonus for this. This, intent of this is to provide entry-level, single-family detached homes for folks in the community. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Commissioner Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Little. Appreciate the presentation. I did have a question on the trails and sidewalks in the project. And I'm curious why, for the street-adjacent sidewalks, you're showing DG on the plans, where in your presentation just now, we saw concrete sidewalks where it's street-adjacent. So what is the proposal?
So on the plans, we're asking for DG or, or concrete. We originally went with DG in thinking that that was kind of a softer feel, and then after further consideration, we thought, you know, it's really a maintenance issue as well. It looks great, but again, we're, you know, it's all as a cost implication, and we want to have stuff that the HOA is able to maintain in a cost-effective manner, and keeping in mind that, you know, these homes really are that first-time, first-time move-up for folks that are coming out of townhomes or even apartments. And possibly, there are also move-downs, too, that want to remain here in the community and want a single-family home. So the point is, we're trying to be cognizant of maintenance issues for the HOA. So we put DG in there and concrete. I think our preference is probably concrete if we could only get one.
So where I'm heading is asking you if you would not be opposed to a condition from the commission to require concrete for the street-adjacent sidewalks, not the other trails?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
There we go. Okay. Thank you for your presentation. I really appreciate that you got community feedback. I think that's so important. In reference to the crosswalks, how did you decide where to put those? Because I noticed they're not exactly at the intersection points.
Let me see if I can get back there. This doesn't really, well, it does kind of write it.
I would see, but they're, you know.
Yeah. So we put it there because the crosswalk going up the hill is on the right-hand side of the street, and so we wanted it at that intersection for sight distance and visibility for cars versus, you know, putting it offset where somebody may already make the turning movement and not, not see somebody. So that's, that was really our driving factor there, is just to provide the best connectivity.
Okay. And maybe I can't tell the hill from this diagram, right? And then there's the question of, there's not sidewalk on both sides.
Correct. Yeah.
I imagine that if I'm in that outer ring of houses, I don't know if I would cross the street. I might just walk in the street, or, you know, humans will walk the way they're going to walk, right? There's the meme of, of the college campus where everyone walks across the grass instead of going on the right angle. It's just something to think about.
Yeah.
I think my big question is about the pond. So I know that you looked at wildlife in the area. Are there any existing fish in that pond?
I don't believe so. No fish. Our environmental team is saying no fish. And also, there were no special species. We did a nesting bird survey, no nesting birds, anything like that.
I saw that. That's great. The reason I ask about fish is there was a letter referring to mosquitoes. And mosquitoes are an issue. They're a health issue, right? We've had actually cases of malaria and dengue fever in San Diego, as well as other things. Yeah. So there are fish that will eat mosquito larva that could be put in that pond, and I would love if something like that could happen. There might need to be some guidance to the homeowners' association, since they will build their CCRs on how to maintain the open spaces.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's my concern.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, one of the things that we're looking, looking at in building these is, last thing we want is a bunch of, you know, trying to sell them to people and mosquitoes flying all over the place. So it's a practical question, and I think vector control just comes on the property anyway and dumps mosquito fish in there, but we're certainly amenable to putting something in the CCNRs and having that be a directive for the community management team to make sure that that happens.
Yeah, I'd love to see that. And there's something about mosquito fish where if there's And there's something about mosquito fish where if there's native fish, you're not supposed to use them, but if there's no existing fish, then I think it's okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Thompson?
One of the things that I thought about when I was looking at the project was about fire safety of the building materials. I recently learned of some pretty incredible, you know, new building materials that can be used that are super fire-resistant, and I just wanted to encourage you to try and like utilize as much of that new technology as possible to make these houses as safe as possible, because it seems like the weather events are getting more intense, right? So like, I was looking into putting real shutters on my house, because we almost got hit by a hurricane last year. So, you know, these have the fake shutters, so that wouldn't really like protect these homes from like a serious storm like that. So just wanted to mention that, and also as many shade trees as possible for the community.
Yep. Yeah. In planning and development anymore, fire safety is, it's not the most important planning thing we're all having to address. It's number two. So, yeah, and as we go through our construction documents and final engineering, we'll certainly keep an eye out for that kind of stuff. As we go through these anyway, we try and incorporate that as just a good business practice.
I'll now open our public hearing, so thank you so much. None of the other commissioners have any questions? Do we have any speakers? Okay. Well, let's see. If you want to speak, please give your speaker slips to Mr. Torres. And just to let you know, we'll, you have three minutes to speak, and that will let you know when you're running out of time.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. I am a resident and property owner just north of the project site and what was referred to as the half-acre semi-rural properties. And so I have a couple questions or concerns. One was, as you raised, about the pond. Oh, and I'm sorry, I'm also representing Guard, Gwahomi Alliance for Responsible Development, and we come before here and before the council on many projects. So our concern from that standpoint is always the traffic congestion that will get dumped onto East Fistaway. East Fistaway, you know, the whole community is growing, but East Fistaway, in that area between Taylor and going up to Gopher Canyon, is, you know, a real issue, and there's nowhere to grow. There's already existing mostly businesses along that corridor. So in that triangle there between Old Taylor and Taylor, a lot of traffic tries to avoid that congestion and uses those roads, so there'll be extra, you know, burden on those streets and on Taylor Road. So, but I am glad to see that they're going to have sufficient parking, and we'll maintain open spaces in addition to the two-car garages, so that's good. We won't have to worry about all the parking that can't exist on Taylor. So that's the one thing. As far as the pond, yeah, I've heard, and there are people in our neighborhood who are concerned about mosquitoes and that that really hasn't been maintained. So I'm glad to hear that they are going to keep that, and that, yeah, it definitely needs to be maintained and keep mosquitoes at bay. And I'm very surprised or to hear that there are no nesting birds. There are nesting birds all over and in our neighborhood, so that there aren't, I find that hard to believe. So I am concerned about the wildlife in there. Right now, it's full of mature trees. There's lots, I'm sure lots of wildlife and birds that live there. And from this, I can't tell, is this all just like landscaping, but I want to know what's going to happen with all those trees? How many of them are going to be maintained for shade and for, you know, just for the oxygen and the beauty that they give to that, to our neighborhood and for our feeling of the rural?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Pardon me for the pronunciation. Josie Hill?
Joe.
Joe. Sorry. That's Joey. It looked like a C.
My name is Joey Hill. I represent Norway Hall Foundation. We're a 501(c)(3). We put on the Vista Viking Festival for the last 20, 23, 24 years. And for about 20 of them, we put it on at 2006 East Fistaway that's adjacent to where this property is. And some of that property that we use, we had a use agreement with the previous landowner to utilize some of the property. We spent tens of thousands of dollars on some improvements with fencing, with paving the area over there, some gate, we put up some gates. And we actually, once we heard this project had started, we decided to move our festival off-site to the Antique Gas and Steam Museum, because we weren't sure how this project was going to impact our use agreement that we had with the previous owner. So this plan's a little bit different, I think, than the one that I saw, so I'm really just curious of how the housing development is going to impact the, some of the property that we had been utilizing because of the previous owner. So that's, that's my big thing about that, because if that is taken from us, we would not be able to have our festival back on our property where it was for 20 years. We would lose our outside stage, oh, sorry, we would probably lose our forge that we built out there for blacksmithing. So the Norway Hall, we've been there since the 1950s. So that building, it's a cultural center for Scandinavian history and, you know, all those things that we've done to improve the property, the fundraising that we do, all goes back into the community. About 75% of what we fundraise goes back into Vista. 20 to 25 goes into the local schools, Vista High, Gwahomi Park Academy. So we're just kind of concerned of, you know, how this final plan is going to impact our property, our easement and stuff that we have over there. So it's a big concern for us, so.
Any other speakers? So that was my last speaker slip. The public hearing is closed, and I'm opening it up for Commissioner discussion. Commissioner Martin?
I'm kind of wondering if Mr. Little would like to address the previous speaker's comments?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for reading my mind. So, yeah, just speaking to what Ms. Gilman said, and I need to clarify, I said there's no nesting birds. So the way the bird surveys work is you go out during the nesting season and you do a survey. And when we did that, there were, there were no nesting birds there. That doesn't mean that there's...
Want to clear the...
Got it? Okay. That doesn't mean that there's never nesting birds out there. It means during the nesting season. But more importantly, what we're required to do is, we're required to do pre-construction surveys for nesting birds. And if there is a nesting bird out there, then we need to wait until the nesting season's over. And then in terms of tree removal in the watershed, we're not moving any trees, removing any trees in that area. So that entire wetland watershed area, no trees are being removed. And the pond, yeah, again, we're absolutely willing to work with staff and vector control as much as for the community and our selfish reasons. We don't want mosquitoes for our residents. And for Mr. Hill, I'm, we're willing to work with him. I wasn't aware, I don't believe, there might have been an agreement from the prior owner, but I don't believe there's any easement on the property, or there's nothing that's recorded on title. But we're certainly aware of their facility and their activity, and we'll work with him and do what we can do. But I don't think there's any conflict with him. But we'll, we'll talk with him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I had a number of comments. The first one is, I noticed that the houses will be using asphalt shingle. And what I'm hoping is that you will be using the thicker ones, and there's a name for it, I can't remember what it is. We used to refer to it as something that's relative to the Elk Prestake, which are your thicker asphalt shingles that actually cast a shadow so that when you're looking at it, it doesn't just look like sandpaper, it looks like something that has some depth to it. Could you?
Yeah, so the elevations identify a product that's Landmark TL shingle, which I did a little bit of research on, and it's actually a triple-laminated construction material, and it's designed for durability plus dimension. So what they say in their ad is it emulates wood shake roofing, so it has been designed to provide a thick butt or a dimension on the roof. So the material that they're proposing should accommodate what your request is.
That was the word, thick butt shingles, yeah. I wasn't sure if I could say that here. So, yeah, I probably, if it's okay with the applicant, I would probably propose that that be a condition, just in case the project is sold at some point, unless, Michael, you think it's locked in enough as part of being on the approved plan.
A condition could be added that requires any, you know, roofing material to be a dimensional material.
Yeah, and I'm sure, looking at the developer's project, I'm sure he wants to do a good job with the roofing on that. Second comment was on B Street. If you follow B Street up on the plan, it just kind of stops, so there's no, understanding there's no future connection for B Street, it just stops there, and that's where it'll stop. I did notice there's no hammerhead for somebody that goes up the street to turn around. There is a bulb a little farther back that I assume is for, you know, trash trucks, fire trucks, anything else that might be coming in there. I guess the only issue would be, you know, we, we live in a very similar development people, we live at the end. A lot of people come up because they think the road goes through, and then they, they're kind of stuck up there, so they're ending up backing down our street and into the cul-de-sac that turns off. So it's not a huge deal, but it's just something that I just kind of wondered why they, well, I think I know why they didn't put a hammerhead there, but anyway, just something that, you know, maybe, you know, you can address. The third thing was parking. Per our standards, there's four, four spaces per house. There's two in the garage, and there's two on the driveway. And I noticed that the garage is about 20 by 20 with a small cutout toward the rear that would be for probably washing machine, dryer, water heater, thing like that. Problem is, there's limited storage, and a lot of times what happens is that people then will not put their cars in their garage, they'll use their garage for storage, and then the driveway becomes the place where the cars are parked, then you only have really two parking spaces per site. And again, not that big a deal, but the other thing that kind of compounds this is that you have reduced width on your street, so you've got no on-street parking. And again, I'm familiar with it because it's similar to the project I, I live in, where we have service trucks, guests, kids have birthday parties, there's a lineup, and they're all in the fire lane. And we just kind of, I mean, there's nothing, you know, we can really do about it. I assume, I don't even know if the fire department could cite somebody in that, in that situation, but I guess my point being is that you're going to have a lot of violations of the, of the fire lane in that kind of a development. One solution would be to, obviously, to provide guest parking on, on site. I'm sure that was talked about when you originally did the plan, and probably because of, you know, the tightness of making the project work, you know, that, that probably didn't work. So essentially, I like the project. I think it does a lot for the, for the site, and I think it'll be a good project. I'm not sure there's really, I'm not going to vote against the project, because I'm not sure there's really anything much we can, we can do about it anyway. It's just maybe something more for staff to think about in the future when we have this kind of a situation. I know it all meets our code and everything, but it's just something, since I live in that situation, it's a little bit, a little bit troubling. But, you know, I'm not going to, I am going to vote for the project unless something obviously comes up. And that ends my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Grimm. Mr. Restler, could you bring up the SB 330 slide again? Sorry, I don't make it a, get a... I just want to take the opportunity, I think it's important for the community to know that a lot of the development standards that the city works really hard on, the general plan, we have the state of California who leads an effort in the last 10 years almost to increase housing and make it so that the cities cannot say no to particular projects, particular growth projects. And this particular project enjoyed some SB 330, SB meaning Senate bill, coming from the state of California. And it, these, these Senate bills regarding housing can have an impact on local government because we can't, for lack of a better thing, we can't say no. We have to allow certain things that maybe historically weren't allowed. And I appreciate the developers' mindfulness in their allowances and the waivers that they chose. I think the project looks great. I like the, how you've laid it out. I like the landscape. I like the design element, the colors that you've chosen. One thing that I know that's concerned some, to the community, especially historically, is that the state allows for property owners to add on to these properties in terms of an ADU. Garages can be converted. If that is allowed, then there's other issues that come up that are out of our hands that we can't do anything about because these are by right from the state. So the project, I like that you have four practical parking spaces for each unit, the two-car garage, the two in the driveway, the turnaround that you had to legally put in there. But overall, I think the project, for the density that you put in there, you didn't have any density bonuses. The waivers that you used were mindful, and, and I thought they were, it's well-laid out. So to that end, I would ask the commissioners if anybody has a motion they'd like to make? Commissioner Martin?
Yeah, I'll move, make a motion, but I have some comments also.
Sure.
And I really like this project. I think it's, it's well-designed. I like the fact that the homes are all less than 2,000 square feet. Very few builders are building single-family homes less than 2,000 square feet these days. And so I think these are going to fill a niche in the market that's currently not being addressed, and so I appreciate that. On the flip side of that, I am a little disappointed that the two plans are so similar. I wish there was a little bit more variation in the two plans. The floor plans for the ground floor are nearly identical, at least in dimensions, but that's not going to dissuade me from supporting the project. So, yeah, it's, it's well-done. To me, it looks kind of like a cluster project. You mentioned that it was... You mentioned that it wasn't, but it takes all of the good things about clustering where you're saving aspects of the environment that, that really should be preserved and then putting the development in the, in the rest of the usable areas. So I appreciate the design. So with that, I would like to make a motion and as part of that, I'm thinking of requesting a couple of conditions if they're agreeable to the, to the applicant. So I would make a motion to recommend approval of the project as proposed by staff with the addition that the CCNRs require the garages to be available for two parking spaces and that the sidewalks that are street adjacent within the project be constructed of concrete and that the HOA be required to maintain the pond in a condition that fosters mosquito abatement. That would be my motion.
Thank you.
I'd like to second that motion. I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. Go ahead.
Commissioner Martin, did you also want to include a condition that requires the, the roofing material to be thick butt dimensional asphalt shingles?
Yes, as discussed by Commissioner Grimm.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the project with the conditions that Commissioner Martin spoke of. Please cast your vote and lock it in. Did we get a, oh, there it is. It's not on my screen. There it is. The motion passes with the commissioners present and we can move on to reports. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to mention that we are planning to have a meeting on November 4th. So if you can, please pencil it in on your calendars. A couple of items for that night. I believe that actually might be our last meeting of 2025, believe it or not. So it's going by fast. So that's pretty much what I have. And I think Mr. Vakai, if you had anything to add to that? He's approaching.
Thank you very much, members of the commission and Ms. Chow. First, I'm honored and thrilled to invite a couple of new employees to come forward so we can make a formal introduction. So Kristin Loomis, our senior office specialist, if you could join me at the podium. So we want to welcome her. She's now admin position overseeing our planning division.
Yay!
And then also Blair Davis, if you can join us also, senior office specialist with our building and safety division.
Nice to meet you.
So they're both highly qualified, great technical admin people and excellent coworkers. So we're thrilled to have them on board with us.
Welcome.
So congratulations and welcome aboard. And then I want to just give you a couple of quick updates on some projects. So the Montevista project that was the 19 single-family homes that you had reviewed and recommended and supported approval of was appealed to the planning commission and it went through two public hearings. And the appeal was not granted and the project approvals were upheld by the city council. I also want to share that staff worked diligently to expedite construction of the Costco gasoline service station. So that's going to be opening any day now. So that's going to have 30 pumps, should be much more efficient than the previous layout of the existing service station. So once the new service station is functional, they'll close the existing service station that'll be repurposed for parking. And I wanted to also let you know that the city council recently received an update on our short-term rental ordinance that we enacted about a year ago. It's been very successful. The finance department did the overview because it was focused mostly on how many short-term rentals we've permitted, which is 103 to date, which is very significant. And they also projected that we're going to have over $300,000 of transient occupancy tax generated by the new short-term rental permits and businesses. So we're thrilled about that. We had one or two bad actors that have since been handled by the city through code enforcement. But other than that, all of the operations have been successful and compatible in the neighborhoods that they've been presented in. So it's been a really successful program and it's been a strong collaboration amongst several departments and we're really proud of the outcome. And so with that, I would just thank Michael Ressler on taking over a project that he inherited from Rafi Magnusarian. And he did a great job getting it to the finish line. So thank you very much, Michael. And then Allegra's been helping us out significantly while Amanda was on family leave. And the arrival of her new baby daughter, Quinn, has been a huge success. And so eventually, probably in the new year, Amanda will be back serving the planning commission. So thank you to Allegra for a job well done as, as well. That's it. Have a great evening.
Thank you so much. If I could ask Leanne to step up to the mic? Commissioners, this is Leanne. She's our student commissioner from Ranch of Buena Vista. Just want to see if you'd like to say a few words about yourself and what, why you joined and if there's anything you'd like to add for the record.
Yes, I am a student from RVV. I like getting involved, planning, leading as well. I really like just volunteering, getting involved with the community. This is a step up from getting involved from not just people, but the city council, which is a big deal to me.
Well, we're happy to have you and I'm going to work harder technology with you to ask for your input if you have any input on any of the items. And if I miss you, don't hesitate to wave at me or whatever, but I'll try to remember that next time. And thank you so much for being here. It's a volunteer position and you took the time to volunteer and, and I appreciate it. And I think I speak on behalf of the panel here that we do. So thank you for joining us and we look forward to seeing you next time.
Sounds good.
Thank you. So with that, I think we stand adjourned. Thank you.